Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of December 8, 2015. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the lovely points that they're supplying for our holiday meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
I saw Katrina Rill here from Jackie Spears's office. Katrina, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do actually have two announcements this evening. The first is there will not be a city council meeting on December 22, 2015, the fourth Tuesday in December. The next regular city council meeting will be held on January 12, 2016. The next announcement is I would like all of you to help me wish our city clerk Carol Bonner very happy birthday. Review of the agenda. Any changes or anything? Okay. Approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 10, 2015, and the errors, corrections, omissions, seeing none to be approved or submitted. The consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Anything on consent?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion is second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, we have a public hearing this evening. We're going to actually conduct a little bit of business, hopefully quickly. We're going to hold the public hearing and take the following actions to approve the medical office project at 841 San Bruno Avenue and associated environmental determinations. We're going to look to do two actions. First, waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 12.96.120 of Title 12, Land Use of the San Bruno Municipal Code, to change for administrative and research AR District to Plan Development District PD and to adopt a related district development plan to establish use and development standards for property identified as 841 San Bruno Avenue West. The second item is adopt a resolution approving a planned development permit and an architectural review permit to ensure that the proposed development conforms to the provisions of the district development plan. David?
Good evening, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The application before you was submitted by Market Street Development LLC. Mr. Charles Smith is the representative of that group and is here this evening and is prepared to provide a brief presentation after my staff report. He'll describe reasons why they're looking at San Bruno for a dialysis center and give some background about the proposed project. The site of this application is 841 San Bruno Avenue West, which is within the San Bruno Transit Quarters Plan area. The Transit Quarters Plan was adopted by the city council in February of 2013. This application represents the second proposed redevelopment project within the TCP area since its adoption. Last year at about this time, the city council approved the first proposal, the Plaza, mixed use development at El Camino Real and San Mateo Avenue. As a consequence of that action, the then vacant and obsolete El Camino Real cinema building and adjoining buildings on that site were removed, and construction of that project is scheduled to begin in spring of 2016. This current proposal on San Bruno Avenue, like the Plaza proposal, involves the removal of an existing obsolete building and transformation of the related property to conform with a vibrant and more modern vision described in the adopted San Bruno Transit Quarters Plan. More specifically, the current proposal involves removing the existing two-story, 10,000-square-foot building on that site and replacing it with a building which is characterized by current more modern architecture. This proposed building is going to be about 15,223 square feet in area. It's proposed to be two floors. It's a medical office building. The proposed building, you'll see exhibits of it behind me on the boards, this proposed building has interesting architecture with many structural offsets, including building overhangs and awnings, a warm blend of exterior colors, and perimeter landscaping. A total of 43 parking spaces are proposed to support this building. Eleven of those parking spaces would be subterranean. While the TCP would allow up to 70 feet in height for a building at this location, this proposed building is proposed to be approximately 40 feet in height and is sensitively designed in relationship to the existing single-family residential units to the south. The existing building has been occupied by a mix of medical, dental, and other administrative and general office uses over time, and with the proposed project development district development plan, the same range of uses would continue to be allowed to occupy the site. In preparation for redeveloping this site, the applicant has been working with the existing tenants, and staff understands that these tenants have either relocated or are in the final stages of relocation. The applicant is intending that the primary use of the proposed building will be a dialysis center with supporting office uses. The entitlements or approvals being requested to move forward with this project include the following: amendments to the city zoning code to change the zoning district classification of the property from administrative and research district AR to plan development district, and to approve a related district development plan to establish use and development standards for the property consistent with the governing Transit Quarters Plan and the city's general plan. So that's item one, and staff has prepared an ordinance for your consideration attached in your staff report packet. The second item has to do with an approval of a planned development permit and an architectural review permit to ensure consistency with the applicable general plan and specific plan and the approved development plan guidelines as part of the ordinance, and staff has prepared a resolution in your packet for that action. Third, and this is administrative at an administrative level, the site is comprised of two lots, and those two lots need to be combined to move forward with the project. A lot line adjustment will be required. That'll be handled by staff. Fourth, there's a requirement for an environmental review for a project like this, and in this case, we have a certified environmental impact report that was prepared for the Transit Quarters specific plan. It's been determined, based on a review by staff and a consultant hired for this project, that the Transit Quarters specific plan will cover the environmental review for this project. Overall, this proposed project has been reviewed by the city's Architecture Review Committee and the Planning Commission, reviewed by the Architecture Review Committee on August 13 and November 12 of this year, and by the Planning Commission on August, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission on November 3. Both bodies had a number of recommendations for improving this project. The applicant has incorporated all of those recommendations in the proposed project that's before you tonight and addressed with proposed conditions of approval. Additionally, the proposed project has been reviewed by applicable city departments, and city departments have recommended conditions of approval, which have been reviewed by the applicant and accepted by the applicant. Accordingly, given this review process and the incorporation of revisions to plans and the recommended conditions of approval, staff is recommending that you move forward this evening and take the action to waive first reading and introduce the ordinance amending Chapter 12.96.120 of Title 12 of the San Bruno Municipal Code to change from administrative and research district to plan development district and to adopt a related district development plan to establish use and development standards for this property identified as 841 San Bruno Avenue West. Secondly, staff is recommending that you move forward and adopt a resolution approving both the planned development plan and architecture review permit. Both the ordinance and the resolution are attached to your packet. I'd be happy to receive any questions you may have on this matter. And additionally, we have a number of people in the audience. We have Charles Smythe, the applicant's representative. They can talk a little bit about the dialysis center and why at this location. We also have Ray Pendrow, who's with Mora, Isafano, and Goldsman, who prepared the environmental review, and we also have the project planner that worked on this project, Paula Bradley. So with that, staff would be happy to respond to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any questions for staff?
To the chair. David, could you explain mainly on the architecture that there were some concerns or there were some comments by the Planning Commission and possibly ARC review, and what those might be, and did we get a peer review from our design consultant on this, and what was his comment?
Yes, we did. Be happy to review all that for you. The Architecture Review Committee and Planning Commission had a number of issues that they raised. One, they were looking at the tower element at the northeast elevation of the proposed project as viewed from El Camino Real on San Bruno Avenue, and they were trying to decide whether there should be a flat, slanted, or a hip roof on that tower element. Both the Architecture Review Committee and Planning Commission looked at that, and they decided that they favored going with the flat roof that was more consistent with the overall kind of more modern architecture of the proposed project. They also wanted to make sure along the southern elevation, this is the elevation that faces the existing residential units to the south, that there be some attractive treatment to that side elevation. You'll notice in your plans that there's a green wall. You'll also notice that in the conditions of approval, there's a requirement for full fencing plan to assure separation and screening between those residential units and the proposed project site, and also landscape treatments. Additionally, the commission and committee were looking at the weather conditions in this area and felt that in terms of wind conditions coming into the site from the west, that it would be favorable to have a vestibule in the inner interior in the waiting room of the dialysis center, and so the applicant modified the vestibule area to create kind of a double entry for protection of people in that area. They also wanted to see some foundation plantings, and the applicant installed foundation plantings. Those were some of the comments that were addressed by the applicant and came forward from the Architecture Review Committee and the Planning Commission. And council member, you had another request, perhaps?
This comes from my design consultant.
Sure. From Mr. Cannon. Larry Cannon is our design consultant. Mr. Cannon had similar comments in terms of building architecture, in terms of making sure that there would be sufficient offsets, and I think as you look at the plans, there are a significant number of building offsets, both in terms of the elevation and in terms of the roof line. So I feel that the applicant addressed his comments there. He also had comments about trying to ensure that there would be some screening and separation between this site, its parking area, and the residential properties to the south. And you'll notice that there is some perimeter landscaping, albeit with that perimeter landscaping because there's a sewer line in that area. We don't want to see large trees in that area, but there will be plants and shrubs, and there's a requirement for full perimeter fencing. So fencing is a condition of approval, and with the landscaping, I think that'll be addressed. He also was wanting to make sure that there would be kind of a friendly treatment as seen from San Bruno Avenue, and you'll notice that there are quite a few windows to give this a more friendly appearance instead of more of a blank wall. So, you know, window treatments, there's an open patio at the northeast elevation, again, trying to create that more friendly treatment. So again, it was peer reviewed, and the comments of Mr. Cannon were addressed by the applicant.
Thank you. And lastly, was there any comments about the color, the color palette? It just seems that this color palette just seems to be used for almost every build, every complex. I mean, you see it at Tan Fran, you see it at Town Center, you see it here. I'm just, I mean, it doesn't bother me or anything, it's just that it's very common.
There was discussion about the colors and the combination of offsets and architectural elements and treatments, and I think that both the Architecture Review Committee and the Planning Commission, as well as Mr. Cannon, were satisfied that the combination, the variety of architectural elements and treatments and colors provided interest and would be in keeping with the design guidelines in the Transit Quarters Plan.
Good. Any other questions for staff? At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Charles Smythe, Market Street Development, 1104 Corporate Way, Sacramento, California. Happy birthday, Ms. Bonner. Ms. Bonner, I'm sorry. I'd like to thank staff, David, and Paula for their work over the past year. They've been great to work with. We've pretty much tried to accommodate all the requests and get the design. We have ended up this location. Our client's been looking in this market for up to four years for a location. This area is underserved for dialysis. As the population ages and the demographics change, the demand's increasing. They have not been able to find alternative locations. When this property became available, we were very quick to move on. The access to Highway 380, 101, El Camino provides excellent access. Eighty-five percent plus the patients are non-ambulatory and are dropped off by medical vans or family members. The other thing this site offers is excellent shopping and restaurants in the area, so if a family member drops somebody off for care, they can do shopping, go have lunch, and spend some time in the area and come back and pick up the family member later. Our client keeps track, and it's, I believe the government does too, of the dialysis patients in certain areas, so this area is currently underserved, as most areas are, and that's why you're seeing more and more of these clinics unfortunately pop up. I'm here to really answer any other questions or architects here. I'll keep it brief. I know you have a busy evening tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? I think we're good. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this item? If I close the public hearing, going to be precluded from speaking on this again. Action on the...
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion is second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other questions or comments from staff? For staff or action by the council?
Thank you. I would like to commend the staff for the excellent job they've done. It's extremely thorough. Have you ever seen this packet, a presentation of what you've done and what the Planning Commission has done? I have a little bit of detailed questions that perhaps there's a way that I could address them at a separate time, and I don't want to delay anything, I don't want to belabor what we've doing, but is there...
If those questions are design-related...
Yes.
We have a couple of options. As you know from previous experience, minor design-related changes that are consistent in overall character and quality to the architecture review approval can be made by the director. We would be happy to accommodate a conversation with you or Councilmember Ibera had some questions as well, if the council would like to establish a subcommittee or if you'd like to do that individually, we're happy to do that and meet with you and potentially address those if they're minor.
Okay. I would like that. Thank you.
Good. Anything else or action by the council? Looking to waive the first reading is the first motion?
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to say I think it's a very handsome building, and I mean, a couple of the concerns that the Planning Commission, I compliment them on finding those. It does not look like a medical office building, which is very good, and I think it's a vast improvement for what it's replacing up there. With that, I'll make a motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
Motion is second to waive the first reading. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
I will, I'll introduce the resolution. Ordinance first.
Introduce the ordinance.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
At that, I'd like to adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Our next item is public comment on items not on this agenda. It is council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and their action were appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting on any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council?
Robert Rico, as your representative of the mosquito district. I just got a press release today from the Sematell County History Museum announcing that January 12, running through April 10, there will be a new exhibit at the Sematell County History Museum, 2200 Broadway. It will talk about the fight to, let's see, exhibit about the fight to free the peninsula of mosquitoes and title Fight the Bite. The photo display will commemorate the centennial of the Sematell County Mosquito and Vector Control District. In the early 1900s, mosquitoes plagued the peninsula. Today, it is a little-known story, but at times in those days, conditions were so bad that businesses were forced to close while property values fell. With the 1915 Mosquito Abatement Act, a control program was launched to protect residents' health and comfort. The exhibit will feature photographs representing the district's work over the last century, emphasizing its laboratory work, field operations, and public outreach. The exhibit will run through April 10. The museum is open Tuesday through Sunday, 10 a.m. to 4:00. There isn't admission charge.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Good. Anyone else? Could you use that podium, please, for the camera? Thank you. Carol?
Carolyn Livinggood, Cheryl Drive. I just want to invite everybody this Saturday at Golden Gate National Cemetery. We're having Reeds Across America ceremony. I can't think of his name right now, but the commander of the 23rd Marine Regiment will be the keynote speaker. Starts at 8:45 a.m., and afterwards, the public is asked to help distribute wreaths that we have sold on the grave sites. And then on January 2, we'll ask you to come back and help pick them up.
Thank you. Next, please. Tell us your name and your street.
I'm Reverend Dr. Nancy Landauer from the Methodist Church, retired, and I've lived here in San Bruno since 1977, right across the street over on 651 Linden. And I've talked to several of the churches and my neighbors, and we just really want to thank you for going forward with the proposal for the new hotel over there at 380 and El Camino. I know you've all worked for it for many years, and I think we're all excited that it's, you're getting closer and closer to building it, and I think it's something that our community could really use, and we're very excited that it might happen. And I think we're all wondering if any more information that you could give us about when we might hear any more about if the proposal is going forward and when we might be voting on the new developer. Do you have any more information?
I could just tell you that we're going to vote on the financial aspects of that hotel in January, one of our first meetings, so things should start happening pretty quick.
So I could tell, when is your first meeting in January? What's happening?
The 12th, I believe.
The 12th?
Right here, didn't I?
So actually, if I could offer a little bit of clarification, the project is currently scheduled to go to the Planning Commission the third Tuesday of January, so it is not currently scheduled to come to the city council until shortly thereafter. But we can certainly let you know in advance. If you leave your name and contact information with the city clerk, we can let you know as soon as that is precisely scheduled.
Oh, so it's going to the Planning Commission first?
That's correct.
Not to the council?
First to the commission and then to the city council.
Okay, so I'll leave my name and address, and you could give me all the information.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, my neighbors and the people in the churches are really interested in what's going on, so.
We are, too.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll get right into conduct of business. Our first item is adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of San Bruno, California, reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 3, 2015, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law. Carol?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to ask you to adopt a resolution which actually gives the results of our most previous reelection. We have right now 20,060 people registered to vote in San Bruno. 5,568 of them voted, making a total of 27.8%. And I might point out that that's up from 22.2% in 2013. Our mayor, Jim Ruane, received 4,466 votes. Irene O'Connell received 2,963 votes. Marty Medina received 3,381 votes, and Michael Salazar received 2,605 votes. There were two measures on the ballot. One was Measure U and one was Measure R. Measure U won with 2,736 votes, and Measure R won with 2,725 votes. I also might add that 1,118 more people voted in this election than they did in 2015. So now I would just like that you could adopt the resolution.
Okay. Any questions for Carol, or would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Our second item is 10B, administer the oath of office to newly elected members of the city council. Carol?
Okay, I'd like to ask Marty Medina to come forward, please. This one's crazy. You want to stand next to me so you could face the audience? Okay.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Could you raise your hand and repeat after me, please?
[inaudible]
No? I'm going to tell you. I.
Aye.
Marty Medina.
Marty Medina.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties which I'm about to enter.
The duties that I'm about to enter.
Okay, you can lower your hand now. By the authority granted to me as the elections official for the city of San Bruno, I hereby declare that Marty Medina has been installed as a member of the San Bruno City Council for a four-year term, and that he is ready, able, and willing to take office. I proudly present to you this oath of office.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Congratulations. And then you have something that has been sent to you from the county announcing that you are a council member, and also your certificate of election from San Bruno. So good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council, staff, friends, and family. I am truly honored to be here tonight. I want to first thank my mother and father, Rosella and Gilbert Medina. They're here tonight. Thank you, Mom and Dad. I know I don't tell you as much as I should, but I love you very much. Also here tonight are my sisters Mary, Carmen, Lupe, and my brother-in-law's Alex and Marcos, along with my niece, number one, Vanessa. Thank you all for your support and love. My parents gave...
My parents gave all of us core values of respect, compassion, and hard work. This, this hard work came in handy, for when I ran two years ago and lost, it was a very humbling experience. I tried my best, yet still lost, but I learned a lot. And honestly, two years afterward, I was unsure if I wanted to try again. Running for office takes a lot of energy, time, time away from family. And I struggled with deciding what was best for my family. And in the end, I had to run, for my family here in San Bruno is where we are. My family in the back there, Jeanette and Max, thank you for allowing me to do, to do this. I know it's going to take a lot of my time, but it is going to be worth it. It will work out, and as Max says, I promise. In this election, I knew I had to work harder and smarter. I was facing a tough race against two incumbents, but nonetheless, I knew I had to reach all of San Bruno, every residence possible. We took, I took no vote for granted. I tried for the usual endorsements, but I didn't receive them. Not until late, late in the election, when Open the San Francisco Watershed endorsed me. So thank you, Andy House. And so how do, how did I do it? I did it with an amazing corps of volunteers. We walked every weekend, and then as the, as the election approached, we were walking every day. Ryan Mercney and Russell Steins, without you, I don't know where I would be. Maybe not in front of this podium, but you were instrumental in my campaign, and I thank you for it. You were there every step of the way, and even on your own at times. Thank you. We did not agree on everything, and now we probably still not going to agree on everything, but somehow, we decided to get together, pull in the same direction, and got something done. Jim Evangelist, Jeffrey Tong, Marco Durazo, Scott Curtner, Robert George, Robert Fowler, Martine Renteria, and Jennifer Blanco, thank you for your help in spreading the word to your friends and neighbors, and thank you to everybody else that voted for me. There were numerous times in this election when I had doubts, but just hearing from one single resident, "Hey, you know what? I'm going to vote for you." That was enough to sustain me with enough energy to continue working harder. And with the election results, it is clear, the voters of San Bruno's, of San Bruno overwhelmingly wanted change and a new voice. I realize change is not possible with one vote. I pledge tonight to work with all the city councils, every single one of you, because I know you want what's best for San Bruno as much as I do. We will not agree on everything, that is clear, but as in a Medina family, you don't need to agree on everything to succeed. Together, we can do amazing things. We can build that year-round swimming pool with the PG&E restitution funds. We can find a way to upgrade our library, our community center, recreation center, senior center, and sports fields. We have to find a way to support our schools, improve our downtown now, efficiently maintain and upgrade our infrastructure with sustainable and affordable rates, upgrade San Bruno cable with affordable gigafiber internet, and I would love to create a San Bruno volunteer program to help beautify our schools, parks, help seniors turn their brown front yards into beautiful drought-tolerant landscapes. Together, we can do this. Thank you very much.
If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
Aye, Irene O'Connell.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties which I'm about to enter.
The duties which I am about to enter.
Okay, you can lower your hand. By the authority granted to me as the elections official for the city of San Bruno, I hereby declare that Irene O'Connell has been installed as a member of the San Bruno City Council for a four-year term, and that she is ready, able, and willing to take office. I proudly present to you this oath of office. Congratulations. And then I also have something for you from the county, as well as a certificate of election from our city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Some of you are wondering why they were helping me down and why I was clumping. I am in a boot because I wrenched my ankle, but it's healing, so anyway, that's why that is happening. I will keep this short and sweet. I think this is the time to thank people, as Mr. Medina has done. We thank the people who volunteered and walked for us. We thank our families, and some of my family is here, my husband Bill, my daughter Katie, my daughter Jennifer. My mother is listening at home. Hi, Mom, and thank you so much for all the wonderful values that you instilled in me as well, and that is being carried on by my children. I'd like to thank the city council for all your support, and especially with the beautification task force programs, and with helping with Operation Clean Sweep. You guys are always great. I want to acknowledge the hard work of staff that puts, that, that staff puts in to keep this city going and moving forward, also the countless hours that the city manager and department has put into keeping our city functioning. Without you guys, none of this would happen. I would especially like to thank the voters of San Bruno. You have shown what you want us to do, and you've talked to us, why you also walk the city. I've talked to many, many people. We will try to do the best we can to make the city the very best that it is absolutely able to. So with that, it's a time to look forward and to renew our vision of San Bruno, and to see that it all gets done. Thank you.
Okay, and now it gives me great pleasure to introduce and give the oath of office to our mayor, Jim Ruane. I.
Aye, Jim Ruane.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties which I'm about to enter.
The duties which I'm about to enter.
By the, you can lower your hand. By the authority granted to me as the elections official for the city of San Bruno, I hereby declare that Jim Ruane has been installed as mayor of the San Bruno City Council for a two-year term, and he is ready, able, and willing to take office. I proudly present to you this oath of office. Congratulations. And you have a certificate of election from the city and the county.
Yeah, it's goofy. Right, okay. Well, good evening and welcome. As I have said for a number of years now, I am Jim Ruane, the very proud mayor of the wonderful city of San Bruno. First of all, the many thank yous to my family, especially my wife and best friend Noreen, my son Jim and daughter-in-law Monica, my three grandsons Gavin, Patrick, and Brendan, and my daughter Stephanie and son-in-law Dan. Special thanks to all of you for allowing me to embark upon another term as mayor of this great city. It does take a toll of time and effort that affects my family, and I want you to know, my family, that I recognize and appreciate your continued support and encouragement. To all of the city of San Bruno staff, city manager Connie Jackson, her department heads and all employees, you have been a delight to work with. It's been a real pleasure. To this city council, especially outgoing Vice Mayor Michael Salazar, it has been a pleasure. To incoming councilmember Marty Medina, I look forward to collaborating with you on this council team. To all of my supporters, both in San Bruno and everyone else, countywide, statewide, and yes, nationally, it is very heartening to know that others recognize the time and effort put into trying to make a difference. A special note of thanks to my treasurer for 20 years, Rob Avison. Granted, he hasn't had to do a whole lot over the last couple of years, but you have to always be there when I needed you. To the special people of San Bruno, it has been an honor to work for you, and I can't tell you how much I value your trust, your respect, and your constructive criticism. Over these last 20 years, the city has been through much. Times they put a smile on your face, and times they bring a tear to your eye. We have worked hard to build a solid foundation. We have become headquarters of internationally-recognized companies, a transit-oriented crossroads, and have laid the solid groundwork for new development, all the while respecting the sensitivities of the people who live and work in this community. We still have a way to go. Our hotel is on the books, the financial configuration to be finalized by the council next year. There are new buildings being planned in the Bay Hill Office Park, and with the passage of Measure N last year, positive inquiries regarding development in our downtown. We are now, and have been for quite a while, balancing the needs and affordability of our businesses and residents regarding the necessity for immediate action in our cable enterprise, our major endeavors regarding water, sewer, stormwater systems, and the inherent increase in staffing and funding. But the positive economic forecast brings with it challenges that we and other cities have to address. We must find a way for individuals and families who work in our community to be able to afford to live in our community. It is a dynamic we haven't had to face aggressively before, and one that must be at the top of our list of priorities right now. Lastly, as part of the aftermath of the September 2010 tragedy, we continue to have to confront the very regulatory and utility bureaucracies that are supposed to protect each and every one of us. We will continue that fight. I have said many times that something good and positive has to come out of all that we have experienced, and the Sematell Community Foundation is a large part of that good. Having just approved their budget and work plan, they are right on the cusp of bringing the first round of restitution funds into our community. I look forward to continue working with this great institution and their fine board. In closing, I want to once again thank all of you for your trust and respect in me as your mayor. As I have said many times before, and will continue to say locally and nationally, I am Jim Ruane, the very proud mayor of the wonderful city of San Bruno. Thank you very much. One last item, 10C, confirm the appointment of the vice mayor to serve a one-year term, and as is protocol in San Bruno, Mr. Marty Medina has not been the vice mayor, he hasn't even been on the council, so it's your turn. Congratulations. Thank you.
Surprise.
Surprise.
Item 11, reported commissions, boards, and committees. There aren't any this evening. Comments from councilmembers? Anything? Okay. Closed session? We don't have a closed session. We will now adjourn this meeting to the next city council meeting, January 12th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. We have some refreshments. Please enjoy the evening.